Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July 15th. My apologies for our 15-minute delay. We'll try to make it up. The agenda this evening is to approve minutes from June 20th, also to discuss an application for a common victual or all alcoholic license by Plaza Azteca, which I saw the construction is proceeding. The most important part of this meeting this evening, from a fiscal point of view, is this is the last day in which we can approve fiscal year-end transfers. We have an update coming. There's a correction in the agenda. Michael Salerno will not be here, but Randy Sylvester will be here to talk about the North Street sewer issues, which we discussed in June. There's an issue on the Thaxter Street easement. And then DJ McKenon, who has been very gracious with his time and support, will put into the public view for the first time a discussion about the draft harbor plan. And then the meeting needs to end by 8:30 because I have a presentation to make to the advisory committee next door. So I'm squeezed at both ends. So we're ready to go. So, any discussion on the June 20th meeting? So noted. Any comments on the June 20th?
No, they're fine.
Fine? Okay. Have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2013 meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have somebody here from Plaza Azteca? Welcome. Come on up.
Do you want to wait and do them all the next time?
Thank you.
If he wants to do them.
And your name is, sir?
My name is Manny.
Manuel Ruben? Manny?
Manny.
Manny, that's good. We like that. Okay.
Thank you.
This is located on Route 53.
It's 6 Whiting Street.
Okay. Thank you. Manny, tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to let us be here. Well, basically, for the past 25 years, the company called Plaza Azteca, which is a Mexican restaurant, we've been, for the past 20 years, trying to ensure to offer to customers high quality of Mexican food. One of the politics that we have, it's everything should be made fresh. Like even tortilla chips, we cut them every morning, you know, to ensure that everything comes fresh to the customers. What else? You know, it was a good opportunity for us to find an opening in Hingham, knowing that it's a good town, it's a good city, and actually, for our research, that the town is missing for a good Mexican place. So that's why we're here.
Okay. And when do you plan to have your renovations done?
The renovations, still in process. You know, our goal is always, you know, to finish as soon as possible, but I'll say we're pretty much on 80% of renovations interior-wise. And exterior is just, you know, a few details, like painting and stuff like that. So our goal, I would say, in the next two weeks, will be done, two to three weeks, to completely done, you know.
Okay.
We have friends that live in Methuen that like your restaurant. And you also have another restaurant, Cafe Azteca?
No.
No, that isn't you? All right. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
So we're looking forward to having you here. They speak very highly of the food.
Well, thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Mr. Healy?
Aside from your Methuen operation, do you have any other restaurants of this nature in the Commonwealth?
Yeah, actually, in New England, we started about four years ago in Connecticut, specifically in Manchester, Connecticut. Well, it's always family-owned business. So we started in Virginia. In Virginia, we have about 40 restaurants. And here, you know, we decided to step up and, you know, try this New England market. And as I said, in New England, we have four years now. And we started in Manchester, Connecticut. We have another one in Newington, one more in Wallingford. That's Connecticut. In Massachusetts, we have Worcester and Methuen. And, well, that's tentative to be here, too.
Your staff is ABC-trained and...
Yeah, one of the things that I was mentioning is that, you know, by regulation, all the staff should have that. In other states, they're not, like, required, but still, we do it. And one of the things that we do, once we start the process of hiring people, we make sure that we train them all, you know, with the TIP certificate and all the serve safe certifications and all, you know, the regulations to ensure the high standard of, you know, of our quality as a service and, you know, all the regulations.
Are you going to be resident as the manager?
I'm the marketing director for the New England area, so I'm traveling a lot. But, yeah, I mean, I'm going to be here at least for the first couple of months. And, yeah, I have the serve safe certification as well, the everything.
And then if you have a change in manager, he has to come back to us. Is that...
Correct.
That's right. Okay. You understand?
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you hired your management staff yet?
Yeah, one of the managers, we already have him, and he's actually on training in Connecticut right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Healy, would you entertain a motion for me?
I move to approve the application for a restaurant common victual or all alcoholic license by Plaza Azteca Hingham Inc., 6 Whiting Street, Hingham. Antonio J. Melendez, manager, subject to the approval of all town boards and departments, completion of the premises in accordance with the building plan is submitted. Submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage in at least the minimum statutory amounts and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next part of the agenda has to do with the fiscal year-end transfers. So Mr. Alexiades, Ted, if you could walk us through.
We have several year-end, final fiscal 2013 transfers. The first one is a transfer, their intra-department transfer request from the engineering account, selectmen's engineering, which is maintained within the DPW, to the engineering salary account. We settled a contract, a labor contract, throughout the year, and we needed these additional dollars to cover the cost of the contract.
Okay. Any question on that one?
No.
Make a motion?
I recommend that we vote favorably to approve the engineering intra-department transfer request in the amount of $1,774 from the BOs engineering account to the engineering salary account.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is an intra-department request from group insurance to treasurer's salary account in the amount of $1,018. The reason for the transfer is, as a result of the town's reclassification study, there were a number of adjustments to salaries, and the total amount of these adjustments exceeded the appropriation for Article IV. So as you know, we do Article IV budget pretty much a year before the whole cycle. We've allocated somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000 over varying years to Article IV to allow the personnel board to make adjustments as needed throughout the year. The classification study that was done last year resulted in a number of changes to the compensation of a variety of employees, and the treasurer's department did not have enough in their salary, no fault of their own.
Were these upgrades, a change in class, or...
Yes, change in classes from one to another, or change in the whole class. I don't know the total number of them, but this was the only department that didn't have that capacity within their...
Was that $1,000?
Yeah.
And that effect, okay.
Jean runs pretty close on her budgets.
Correct. And she doesn't have a lot of flexibility there. That's why...
She counts stamps.
So...
She does.
You know, I want to reiterate, this is not, you know, an issue for the treasurer's office. This was administrative.
Okay. Okay. Irma, you want to...
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer interdepartment transfer request in the amount of $1,018 from group insurance to treasurer's salary account.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and the next one is, the next two are the fire department transfer requests. I've asked the chief, Chief Duff, to be here, and I'll highlight them for you. $12,508 is actually a reserve fund transfer request to salaries and wages. And, you know, this is, again, due to injuries, the nature of the request that you had a few weeks ago. Between that request and the end of the year, the deputy, sorry, the chief thought he could manage within those existing resources, but it would have necessitated making some reductions that were just not compatible with our service goals, i.e. taking an ambulance out of service. So, and some sick time was just continued to be extended. And then the other one is $9,537 for various repairs of an emergency nature, and the chief can explain those to you.
Chief, start with the repairs that might be...
I think it's basically laid out. We'd lost a water heater on June 24th. There was no way I could predict that. Vehicle fuel was $600 higher than anticipated. And our ongoing mold issue to resolve 90% of that, maybe even as much as 95% of those issues, we had to bring in an outside contractor to do it. That's still ongoing, but we're very confident that we've got most of the issues taken care of. Again, as you're aware, we have another very, very, very humid year, and a few more things have popped up, but I'm quite confident that, I hate to say this, but I will say this publicly, I'm quite confident that any additional issues that we need to address in the station, I believe we're going to bail the handle without any more transfers.
I'm surprised we haven't had problems in the outer stations, because we've been looking at them...
It's a completely...
...on the capital plan for quite a few years.
It's a completely different system than what's at headquarters with, it's a system that operates off of cooling water and a cooling tower. It's our first experience with anything like this. When we do the renovations, we learned a very big lesson here, and when we do the renovations, if we do the renovations in the future, we're going to pay a lot more attention to the types of HVA systems, lighting systems, and a myriad of other things that go on in those buildings.
Paul?
I'll move to recommend approval of fire department fund transfer request in the amount of $12,508 from the reserve fund that wages full-time.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to recommend approval of fire department fund transfer request in the amount of $9,537 from the reserve fund to repair and maintenance buildings.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Your next transfer, your last one, well, actually, we can guarantee your last one of the fiscal year.
This is it.
This is the last day.
Unless we're coming back before midnight.
Is $10,800 for legal services. It's an intra-department transfer request. We're taking it from town hall expenses, where we had some surplus. And, you know, we've had two cases that we've spent a lot of money on during the month of June that were not anticipated, the Ridgewood Crossing case and the Back River case, both of which we racked up quite a few billable hours with counsel to resolve. And one, of course, as you know, is not resolved.
Do we have, do we have a listing of the entire legal budget?
Yes.
In terms of what the case is? That would be something I think the board would be interested in seeing.
We do.
I would definitely. Thank you.
Betty, do you have access to that? Do you want it now?
No, I don't need it.
Okay, well, we'll have it to you.
Just get it to us, I think.
You can have it to you, you know, tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the... What did we spend totally for legal this year?
Betty, you have the total numbers?
Let me do a little quick math in my head.
I will tell you, the two cases that we highlighted in June that we were not anticipating when we compared what our request was to actual was $12,000, it was roughly $12,000 in billable, a little over $12,000 in attorney fees.
Approximately $339,000 this year.
But, well, that's a lot. When was the last time we had a lawsuit against us?
Well, you know, as you know, we're spending more money on legal services the last, you know, several years, but I don't, I can't recall an action that was brought against the town in the last three years. And a lot of the work we're doing is with our permitting boards, trying to get ahead of things so that people don't take actions that result in legal action, that results in much more costly stuff. So, you know, it's an outcropping of, I think, really, the movement on the advisory committee back in 2007, '08, '09, those era years, was to get the town to focus its legal effort beforehand, not afterhand. So look at the contracts before they were signed. Look at the agreements beforehand. Make sure that they were, you know, airtight, so they were not ambiguous, because, as you know, the legal profession sometimes lives in ambiguity. So the more careful we can word these documents, the better off we'll be. Some standardization of the contracting, and, you know, that costs.
Okay. Well, can we put on the agenda for next time that summary sheet of how we spend...
Sure.
Can we get it sooner? Like...
Well, we'll do it on...
Betty, you can print it off for us.
Sure, yeah. But if you can get it to us, that would be fine. Okay. Any questions, Paul? Okay.
I'll move to recommend approval of legal services intra-department transfer request in the amount of $10,800 from town hall expenses to legal services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it? Okay, we can, and advisory can vote on these tonight as well.
About 15 minutes.
Okay. Last time, we had a discussion about a number of issues concerning North Street and the sewer on North Street. And Randy Sylvester, the DPW superintendent, is here to update us, and I understand we have some news from...
We do.
I'm recording, so you have to announce that.
Mr. Patch is recording the session for those in the public who are in attendance.
Since we last met at the selectmen's meeting, we've had Siemens in to the Mill Street Station. I told you we're going to put a chemical feed system in. The chemical feed system, which introduces dioxide into Mill Street, was installed on July 8th, and the chemical feed system was started that afternoon around 4:00. Hydrogen sulfide sensors were put in cement holes and the well, the wet well, and the next day, the hydrogen sulfide readings were near zero. They went from nine to 10 parts per million down to just about zero parts per million. And that's, excuse me, and that system will continue running right along, dealing with hydrogen sulfide, which causes odors. Early in the month, I mentioned we were going to have a cleaning of the main, which we will do biannually. That was done, I believe, on July 2nd. There was an incident. We did have, it did cause an issue. We had a mishap on North Street. It did blow off a carbon vent on a couple of roofs. Crews were sent to pick it up. We have since bought new vents, and we're waiting for those to be installed. We also, there were some manholes that were in disrepair. Today, we had crews out there and a contractor, and has since repaired those manholes. And that's about the update.
What about the fog?
Fog program.
Yeah.
For the audience, that's fats, oils, and grease.
Yeah, fats, oils, and grease. We've been working with the sewer commission and the Board of Health have been, have been working together on the fog program. We did meet, matter of fact, I met with the Board of Health before I came in at the last meeting. We have another meeting on Wednesday night with them. We're working in conjunction and going out together, doing inspections, and they're writing up violations or orders as we go.
How were the complaint levels from the area citizens?
On North Street?
Yeah.
We did receive a written complaint after the selectmen's meeting...
Yep.
...describing historical days or events that they did notice an odor that occurred. We haven't, on the day that mishap happened and on the cleaning and blew off the vents, we did get complaints that day, but we haven't received any odor complaints since that, to my knowledge. Nothing has been logged in at the office.
You indicated that you went out with the Board of Health to do the inspections of the grease traps?
The sewer supervisor goes out with Susan Rowe, their inspector, and they make appointments and go out and inspect restaurants. There's a list of restaurants that we're out there doing.
Do you have any idea how frequent those inspections are?
Recently, there have been about two a week in the restaurants.
And I'm trying to get you the history, Paul, that you've asked for, on all the inspections down there. And Bruce Catman, the Board of Health, the Board of Health Director, has told me he will get that for us.
Can you speak louder so I can hear you?
Sure. I did speak with Bruce Catman, the Director of the Health Department, and he indicated to me that pursuant to Selectman Healy's request, that he would be preparing a list of inspections and results over the past several years.
Randy, the standards that are written, are they for each restaurant or food facility? I'll not use the word restaurant, because some, we have sort of fast food. Are they very specific in what has to be done for each facility?
Yes.
If someone is renting a facility, do you know whose responsibility it is to put the grease trap or whatever?
To my knowledge, it's the restaurants, the vendors' responsibility.
Okay. But it is somebody's responsibility?
It is someone's responsibility.
We can't do one of these, it's his?
Well, I think it'd be a little bit, probably have to look at the nature of the lease.
Okay.
I mean, if I'm a landlord, or, you know, as a representative of a landlord of the town, I wouldn't sign a lease with a tenant that would not make it clear who was responsible for the activities going on in that facility. Not everybody signs their leases that way.
To me, the expectation, if you have a restaurant for rent, that it is a restaurant, it probably should be outfitted already.
Correct. I would correct you, I agree with you on that one statement. It's either the landlord or the tenant. And ultimately, it's the landlord, if they own the property, hoping that the landlord had the appropriate lease set up with their tenants. But if not, it's the landlord's responsibility if they want that activity to go on in their facility.
Okay. Mr. Healy had another question.
Do we know whether or not all those food providers and restaurants have grease traps?
That's what we're checking now, and that's why we're doing the inspections. And they're also, the main thing what they do is, most of them have grease traps that I know of. And if they don't, they're sharing them, which isn't allowed. We go and inspect because they're supposed to have grease traps, and they're supposed to keep a log. And we're looking for the log and the maintenance on these. I mean, people can have, restaurants or vendors could have grease traps, but if they're not maintained properly, then they don't do any good. So we go in there specifically looking for the maintenance records and any pumping records that we can find, so we can actually figure out if they're maintaining it correctly.
I'd like to recognize one of your folks and one of Bruce Catman's folks, Susan Rowe and Steve Dempsey. Susan was telling me the partnership with her and Steve, working with the town of Cohasset, in identifying and resolving, on a go-forward basis also, a situation at that end of town. And I won't divulge the restaurant's name, but I think most people know what it is. But I think it's great to see your folks and the Board of Health working so closely together, and also with another town.
I want to, I'm very thankful that you've done what you've done, Randy, and it took us too long, as we all know. I'm going to open it up for questions from the public, because I see some faces who were here last time. Yes, sir? Please, if you would. You don't have to sh... Could you, excuse me, could you bring that up and identify who you are for the folks at home?
Travis, Hingham North Street.
Thank you, Ron. Yes, sir? Thank you.
We all know that the spill line is defective. And again, as I mentioned a long time, we take a man-made approach by using chemicals trying to solve the problem. When there are sags, there are, we have the report, but hopefully, the Board of Selectmen has the engineer's report. We have the information from the Board of Health saying they've ordered the system to be fixed, and nothing's been done. We're still going back to protect the road, and the road was paved, knowing that this system was defective. I just, to live under these conditions, I understand you're trying to help us out and trying to stop the problem with the odor. But the problem, again, when we blow the line, it backs up, blows the filters off the roof, the toilets overflow, and the odor comes into the house, which they say, oh, it's not supposed to do that. But it does. So is it going to be another six months, and we're going to have to assure the toilets upload and the filters secured, or we're going to have rockets set up again? We're just not addressing the problem. The problem is defective stuff that we knew about back in '05. The town paved it over, I forgot about it. It's not your fault, but back when, something happened, and everyone hides and goes...
No, nobody's hiding. Nobody's hiding.
Well, I think we are again.
No, no, let me finish. We are not hiding. We are not hiding. I promised you we would do this July 15th. I said that to you. He's not done yet.
Right.
He's just giving you a status report.
I wonder if it's in the road or not.
That hasn't been decided yet.
I think the important thing also was Randy and his team. No, Jerry, I think your points are, and also, I think, sharing with us that 2008 letter was very important. I think Randy is also looking at your point in one of the documents I saw, that we need to get this straightened out and fixed before we do Ship Street and Cottage Street. That would just be a disaster.
So...
I think Randy and his team are doing a good job with trying to...
They're doing fine. But to your point, we're going to be back here in August. On August 22nd, I commit to you, we'll do this again and see what the next phase is. We're going to do this until you're satisfied. That was my commitment.
Could I ask?
Shirley, come up.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you can be calm. I'm sure you will be.
Could I ask, do what? In just, as like I promised, in February, the lines were cleaned. The chemicals put in. I believe February...
Is that right? I don't know that.
No, the chemical feed system was just put in on July 2nd, I mean, July 7th, I'm sorry.
Okay. But I do know the lines were cleaned, because that's when the toilets bubbled over, the house, obnoxious odor throughout the whole house, upstairs and downstairs. Then I see the trucks in July 2nd, and I quickly closed the lift to the toilets. They bubbled over. The smell was disgusting again. I called Bruce Catman. To my surprise, he came over within 10 minutes, came in the house, agreed with the sketch. We had a long talk. And I would just like to clarify, if this temporary solution is in six months to do this again, no.
No.
I am not having that odor in my house again.
No. Well said.
It's unhealthy, and I just will not have it done again. So I don't know what the solution is.
I, I'm not an engineer, and I don't profess to know it either, but I can...
So what's next? Could I ask, what's next?
Well, as far as the cleaning goes, we'll make sure that doesn't happen to you again. And I do apologize that that did happen.
But that was also stated in February, and nobody, you know, it happened here. Nobody seems to know why the, why the smell is coming in, and the second time, the vent blew. We, you know, ran charcoal over the whole yard. I mean, you... I mean-
Yeah, no, no, the folks at home haven't, though, so I understand your concern. The date is, this, we're coming back, as we peel back the onion on this, to make sure that we address the question. And my understanding is that the odor is not there at the moment.
Please, please call us.
I have, and I can't understand why no one has any reference.
Who did you call?
I called the DPDW, I called the Selectmen's Office, and I called the Board of Health. I have the dates here.
Would you give us that information, please?
Yeah. I don't know where the information, why it didn't flow through.
When you do that again, can you get the name of the person you spoke to? That would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think I have.
Oh, good. Can you get that? In fact, I'll call you tomorrow.
All right. You'll be back next month. Yes. Because we're not done until some, Mr. Patch.
I'm Patch, nine Ship Street. I just want everybody to understand something, that the town has been unnoticed that this pipe was defectively put in since about 2006. It's in the record. The Sewer Commission voted expressly in January of 2009, after their engineer looked at this problem and decided the only way to resolve this was to dig up the pipe and replace the defective pipe. The Sewer Commission voted to do that in January of 2009. And in the minutes, it reflects expressly how important it was to do that before the town repaved the road. And they did nothing at all. This is a disgrace to the town, okay? The town received $150,000 from Cashman, the Cashman Consortium, to repair this line. My understanding, that money went into the general fund, as opposed to going to the Sewer Commission so that they could do this repair work. Seems to me, this is where really the problem is. Somebody doesn't want to give up the money to fix this problem. And the people on North Street have been suffering through this, and I think Mr. Travis has got the right description when he says this is a Band-Aid approach, okay? The only way this is going to be fixed is to dig up the pipe and replace the pipe. And unfortunately, it sounds like what's happened here is, you know, according to the Sewer Commission's minutes, they initially, the engineer initially came up with an estimate, I think, of around $300,000 to do this work. And they settled for $150,000. And now their engineer, now the town's engineer, the Sewer Commission's engineer is estimating it's going to be close to $200,000 to fix this problem, whereas they could have done it in 2009, before the road was repaved. So, you know, it seems to me, again, this is a Band-Aid approach, we're what, three years into the moratorium? I think we've got another two years to go. And just for the record, you know, I told the DEP that, you know, and my position is that the extension permit for Ship Street and Cottage Street, because the line on Ship Street is supposed to be going right into this defective line on North Street, that the DEP should not be issuing the extension permit for Ship Street and Cottage Street, and shouldn't even consider it until the town fixes the problem on North Street. Because the town has demonstrated that even if the DEP were to condition the repair of the Ship Street Cottage Street extension permit on the repair of the North Street problem, the town has demonstrated that it will not do so. The town has had a number of years now to address this problem. So, you know, as far, you know, what's going to happen, as far as I'm concerned, because everybody knows I'm against the Ship Street Cottage Street project as in its current iteration. So, you know, the longer, if you guys want this Ship Street Cottage Project to go through, then, you know, it seems to me, the only way the DEP is going to give you your permit is if you correct this problem, you actually correct the problem.
We, I think you heard Armus say that. We understand that. August 22nd, you come back with the status?
Sure. Absolutely.
Ted, to the question, Tom made the suggestion that the $150,000 is not there.
All right. So, in 2005, the town, the sewer department, had a settlement with the MBTA for about $110,000 for water that was pumped out of the sewer system, or groundwater that was pumped into the sewer system. And all that water went to the MWRA, and we got a bill for it as part of our total usage charge. So, in effect, in 2005, the ratepayers paid for groundwater to be discharged at the MWRA. That was part of the settlement. In addition, there was $35,000 for another part that was unclear in the documentation that we have from '05. The sewer department turned the money over to the town treasurer and indicated it was to go into the general fund. The town treasurer and the town accountant deposited it at those instructions. It is still in the general fund, along with a lot more. I've, I'm going to recommend to the board that in next town meeting, you transfer $150,000 from the general fund balance into the Sewer II account, so that we can just clear up that issue, that the town grabbed the money and purposely, you know, some people will make the innuendo that it was done purposely, not to do something. It wasn't. It's always been there. Sewer department didn't follow through with figuring out what they wanted to do with it, but that's not, you know, to say that the town took $150,000 is just completely inaccurate. It's sitting there, we'll transfer it back, and that'll be that.
Ted, if the road has to be redone, if Randy and his team come back and say, there is no other way, where does the money come from?
Well, we have our road paving budget, and we have Chapin 90 funds, and we'd use it from one of those funds.
But not the money from the sewer?
Well, we certainly could use that, too, of course. Why not?
It'd probably be used from the sewer, so.
Yeah. The answer is, we have a town policy that we don't open roads, as has been stated twice here this evening. We want to be sure that when we do that, that it's the right reason. That doesn't mean we won't do it. We have done it since I've been a selectman, where we've had to, and we'll do it again. But I want to take the other steps, because we have to do this anyway. I mean, my understanding.
Yes.
And we have a number of issues with the Board of Health and the Sewer Commission, and this is not technically a selectman responsibility. But we've inserted ourselves in order to get it resolved, because Tom is right. It's gone on way too long.
Well, I would also add, Mr. Chairman, as you know, you signed a contract with the Sewer Department to help manage their operations, and so that's what Randy's doing, trying to manage these operations that may not have been managed as well as Randy's doing it now, and Steve Dempsey and Susan Rowe, as you pointed out, Irma, I think are doing yeoman's work, really trying to resolve the problem. So, we have a $200,000 to $300,000 solution, we have a less than $10,000 solution, and maybe a mid-range one if we put the trap in along one of the lines. And I think what we're preaching is that some prudence would suggest, try the smaller ones first, because you can't repave that, you can't rip that road up in the middle of the summer right now, with no advance notice, with no engineering, with no, we wouldn't be able to get to it this year anyway. Even if you told me, start doing that tomorrow, I don't think we can get to it before the end of the year, just in the terms of what it takes to take a road down, let alone talk to the business community down there about yet another disruption, which we will do, when we need to do that. And if that road has to be repaved, that's what will happen.
Randy, will the fat oil and grease, the fog, will you have results of that by the time we get back together?
As far as inspections?
Yes.
The data that-
Yes.
Yes. I was told I'd have that within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
All right. One last question.
One question, Ted. Today I noticed they were fixing the man-
They can't hear you unless you're in front of the microphone. Yeah.
When we talk about preparation, today they closed the portion of North Street, three detail officers, Marcus was pumping the, whatever he, I don't know what they were doing, repairing the manhole cover. And the road was closed, they locked the driveway with their lovely truck, and that went on for eight hours of pumping with no notice to the residents. And that cost us money. It cost, you know, all those people, a lot of them. Marcus, John, you really had a huge pumping system, and the three detail officers, in the heat of the day, directing traffic, because they closed the street one way, one way. And it can be done. What can be done? No preparation on that one. I just-
What I meant to say is, in terms of, if we're going to replace that whole sewer line, you know, the engineering, the bid specs, the publication of the bid document, the awarding of the contract, it's highly unlikely, if not-
Only this year.
Exactly. So, meanwhile, we're not just going to say, next year, we'll replace the pipe.
We're 28 years from it, and nothing's been done.
Well, but something's being done every day during the summer, as we're trying to tackle this.
Something now. But, you know, if we reject, and I said this at one meeting, that was with the Sewer Committee, we have to go before town meeting, because it's not going to be $180,000, it's going to be a lot more.
Correct.
You're absolutely right.
Yes.
So, if we, I think I could say to you that if we don't see results, at least from my recommendation to the board, is if we don't see results from the small measures that Randy and the Board of Health are working on, then we are going to have to address this through the next town meeting process to appropriate the funding necessary to make a more permanent fix. But we couldn't do the permanent fix even if we wanted to today. So, we might as well try to do the other ones.
Why did the road get paved over originally when they knew there was a problem? Whose decision was that?
So, I'm not going to be able to opine on that. I did not sit in my chair, I wasn't here in that role, so I can't give you that answer.
We'll get you an answer.
But we can try to figure out.
I'll get you an answer for the next one.
That was the problem, that's the number one problem right there. The road was paved over when they were directed not to pave it until the pipe was-
Actually, there's a number of problems, not the least of which is the enforcement of the health inspection laws. That's part of the problem. To Irma's comment about fog, fat oils and grease, there have been a number of problems on the coordination of it, recognized. And the reason the selectmen inserted themselves into this issue was to bring some cohesion and solution to the problem. And it's not an easy solution, but before I spend $300,000 of everybody's money, I want to make sure the more prudent approaches are taken, and we'll do them quickly, so that if we know we have to do it, we'll get it done. And there is money in the bank, if it were an emergency repair, there's a way we can get it done.
And the worst part that would happen is that we tear up the road, fix the pipe, and that isn't the total problem.
And that isn't the problem.
And that's what Randy and Steve are working on, because a lot of things were not done. You heard him talk about the sensors that were just put in there. And they've had monitors, and they've had alarms, they've been putting this, and it's not only North Street. So, they're doing a lot there, and we just need a little bit more time for them.
But I think it's important, though, to recognize that the residents have been enormously put upon here, at least as we see what's enveloping with their descriptions to us that we really weren't aware of, much before Randy got involved in this. And I can't help but express great empathy for you. You know, I've had a house once with a septic system, and when that brown water came up out of that toilet, it was just, you know, not many life experiences worse than that. I really do feel for you, and we are struggling to try to accommodate you somehow and fix these problems.
Yeah.
And just one more quick thought, is I don't think any of us are planning to put our homes on the market, but this is an issue that probably should be disclosed. And the value of our property, which is, I'd like to think it's, I don't know if prime, but it's downtown, it's not going to do well for our-
Understood. No, very much understood. Okay. All right. We will get some of the additional information, and as I said, the town administrator and I are planning a meeting with the chairman of the Department of Health, of the Board of Health, and the-
Chairman of the Sewer Commission.
And the chairman of the Sewer Commission, soon. Because there are, as I said, a list of things that need to be addressed, and your patience is more than gracious. So, thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
We have an easement discussion on Thaxter Street. Have a seat. Could you tell us, introduce yourself to the folks at home, please?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Paul Costello, I'm with Polaris Consultants, and I represent the Lincoln Street Realty Trust. If you recall, we were here about six months ago discussing a town meeting article-
Right.
-to obtain an easement at the corner of Thaxter Street, on Thaxter Street, at the corner of Thaxter and Lincoln Street. The issue with our project is that there is an 18-foot-high concrete wall, that's about 50 years old, and it's leaning slightly in about six inches. It's fine, it's still there. But as a preventative measure, we would like to put some soil anchors, 15 soil anchors through the wall, about every seven feet. They'll be into the ground underneath Thaxter Street about 20 feet. And that's the whole purpose for the easement, that I'm here with Joe Donahue tonight, and we're here tonight to officially obtain the easement.
I spoke with our town engineer, Roger Fernandez, before the meeting, and he indicated everything was in order with your vote. This is consistent with the town meeting vote, allowing them to, as the gentleman just spoke, allowing him to prevent the wall from eventually falling in.
Do these anchors go into the subbase of the roadway?
The anchors will be, the anchors will be installed from the parking street side.
Okay.
Thaxter Street, if you go out there, it's about 12 feet higher than the parking lot.
Right.
And they'll be about five feet off the ground, so they'll be about seven to eight feet below the existing grade on Thaxter Street.
Okay.
The whole purpose is, there's a gas line on Thaxter Street, as well as a water line.
Right.
So, we want to make sure that the wall doesn't continue to settle and impact those utilities.
And this will be well under all those. Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. I talked to Joe. So, I'm good. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the public on this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen acting on behalf of the town of Hingham pursuant to the authority granted by the 2000 annual town meeting, do I have the right one here? Yeah. Under Article 39, and hereby determining that the easement area described herein is available for disposition and of nominal value, execute and deliver to John Hajar and Joseph Donahue, trustees of Lincoln Street Realty Trust, certain grant of easement for the construction and maintenance of an earth retention system in an easement area within the right-of-way of Thaxter Street, as more particularly described and subject to the terms and conditions set forth in said grant of easement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. The next item on the agenda, for which I see a large crowd, has to do with a plan that many people in the audience have worked on, to look at the harbor and to start to circulate some of the thoughts that a number of them have put forth as solutions for the future use of the harbor and its development. There are a number of issues to remind folks, one of which, as we know, is the traffic in Summer Street, and that's an issue of paramount importance to us that needs to be addressed. But in addition, the planning has been going on, and it's appropriate that we start to socialize the output from that planning, so that folks can comment on it. And my understanding this evening is, our intent is to get information out and to seek input from the Board of Selectmen in terms of other steps that might need to be taken, and that we will try to do. So, I don't, is, there he is.
DJ's here.
There he is. I see him in the back. Come on up.
Let me add a couple of things here. As part of the 2007 Harbor Master Plan, which the current Harbor Development Committee has been working on to bring it up to date, it has become very obvious that we have, and we're so lucky to have this, we have a number of maritime groups existing to teach sailing and rowing, and we have terrific high school teams, which Doug McCaig's in the audience, and it's okay to brag about the crew teams and the championships that they've won. Lincoln, of course, has been a mainstay in town for over 40 years. And now we're looking at, how do you move forward and create a community boating group, where all the groups can share in the maritime beauty of the harbor, and where we have a place for the community to go and learn and perhaps exercise, and keep our teams going, and for all of our teams to have the water sheet? So, DJ stepped up with his own money, by the way, no reserve fund transfer necessary, and offered to do, to lead a study with the rowing group and the boating group and the sailing group, and present to us the results of that study. And again, this is conceptual, this has not gone through permitting, this is not architecturally perfect drawings, so don't go measuring the trees and saying, and don't go measuring the width of the roadway. This is a concept. So, DJ?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come back. I'm here with Mariana McCormick from CRI, as well as a host of people that are involved in the Harbor Development Committee, High School Rowing, Lincoln Maritime, and so forth. When I say come back, I was actually with the selectmen, I can't remember exactly when it was, it was a year or so ago, when we started to talk about the idea. At the time, I was trying to focus really on, is there a way that we can move forward a year around rowing and sailing facility on the harbor? I've had involvement and been part of some of the rowing facilities in Boston that people see along the Charles, and would love to see it- see along the Charles, and we'd love to see at some point the idea of a year-round facility here. So we started that discussion, and the Selectmen, a few of whom, which have been in Boston, suggested start working with the Harbor Development Committee, which has been a very worthwhile exercise. I see Bruce.
Excuse me. Bob, can you, are you picking up his sound?
Yeah, I'll move this mic.
Okay.
Somebody have it?
Yeah. Well, just make it easier, so you don't, I know you have, just want the folks at home to hear this and
So we, we started the discussion and started meeting with the Harbor Development Committee, who had started to put together a number of activities along the harbor, and really brought up the discussion about looking at kind of a year-round sailing and rowing facility, which, which we have. And the thought with that particular component was to bring in a group that is familiar with those activities and has a lot of expertise, and that's where Mariana has, has gone out to the scene. I will say, Mariana's counterpart, Bruce Smith, wanted to be with us tonight also and was planning to be here, and I know folks have met him. Unfortunately, his kids, their camp schedule got changed, they were flying into Boston tonight. He needed to pick them up, so he couldn't be with us. But with that, we got CRI involved, and CRI is kind of the premier boathouse in Boston, and they also do consulting on boathouses throughout the country for rowing, sailing, and other water sports. So with that, the idea was to bring in a third party that could look at what we have here in Hingham and provide us with some recommendations on these active water sports, you know, specifically rowing and sailing, but also kayaking, canoeing, paddleboards, and how we could potentially look at utilizing our asset here in Hingham for the community, everything from our younger kids to older people like myself that still row, to the high school programs that we're trying to run down in the harbor. As we get into this, and particularly dealing with the Harbor Development Committee, we realize that there are a lot of different interests in the harbor. In addition to the rowing and sailing and some of the things we're looking at, we have memorials down there, and so obviously Bathing Beach. Many people just like to get out to the harbor to enjoy the harbor, whether it's picnicking, walking, maybe even, hopefully at some point, bicycling along the harbor. But there's definitely a lot of interest in the harbor, and what we really realized is that, you know, we have the opportunity to create really a beautiful park along our harbor. That would have a number of different elements and components to that. I think we're at kind of the early stages of that. Some of the key infrastructure pieces are nicely coming together. The bridge that hopefully we'll, we'll see built, I think, is a very important connection to create that connection between two major portions of the harbor. We also have some deficiencies in our infrastructure. We have this, this big rotary that's down there that allows people to travel at a pretty high rate of speed and creates a pretty unsafe condition. So we know that that's something that needs to be looked at and addressed, and I know there's a separate effort in doing that. So we have a number of different activities that are going on, a bunch of different focus points. What we hope to do is bring this all together so that long-term, you know, we do have a waterfront park area that is available to everybody, accessible to everybody, so people that can't walk to the harbor can maybe drive down there, find a convenient parking space, visit the memorials, have lunch, picnic, you know, rent a kayak, row, sail, whatever it might be. So that's kind of our long-term goal. We know we're still at the early stages, the stages of this, but I think working together and with the strong interest that we have from the various groups that are down there today, from the neighbors that we have, I think we can make, you know, concerted effort towards that and, and move this process forward. The one element that we want to talk kind of specifically about tonight was, we did have CRI and Mariana talk about the actual, what we'll call the boathouse piece of it. You know, we do have very active programs down there today with high school rowing, with Lincoln Maritime, and we think we're, we really feel we're at a point now to take those seasonal programs and be able to bring those into a year-round context. Although I say seasonal programs, our high school program in particular, it really is a year-round program, it's just that they kind of bounce around town to keep their activities underway. So much of the other activity is seasonal, but to have a year-round facility down there, I think, would be great. At the same time, you know, the property that we're talking about for this facility is public property. Ultimately, whatever gets built there would be a public facility. At the same time, like some of our other public facilities, we can have a structure where some, you know, an organization would come in, build it, operate it in accordance with the way the town wants to see it, but ultimately, we're talking about a town facility. So we want to take the steps and measures to, to do this right and plan it appropriately. To create this facility is going to cost a lot of money. I mean, we're thinking on a very preliminary basis, we're probably talking, you know, three, four million dollars, kind of in that range. We don't think we're going to be looking to the taxpayers for that type of funding, and ultimately, the goal is to do this privately through fundraising. We think we can achieve that. But to achieve that, the facility needs to have a long-term lease. So to obtain a long-term lease, under our laws and the Commonwealth, we have to go through a methodical process, and part of that is an RFP process. But before we get to the RFP process, the town really has to decide what they want to see physically, how they want it to operate, and taking that information and putting it into an RFP, we can then get to the stage of issuing an RFP that the physical elements of what, what the town wants to see are part of that. The operational side, so that it's available for everybody, whether it's youth, high school, rowing, other individuals, is part of the overall agreement. And then it can, we can go to the RFP, and the respondent to the RFP would then take on that obligation. But by going to the, to the extent, the town, if it chooses to, can then do, can then provide a long-term lease, which gives the ability to raise the funds and provide this facility for the town. So that's kind of the quick overview, you know, hopefully where we're going, what we're trying to achieve. And what I'd like to do is maybe just turn it over to Mariana. How much time do you think we should allocate to explain the boathouse piece of it? Because I, I, I'm hoping we can get a few comments from the
Give it about five or, five to 10 minutes, max.
Okay. And while Mariana's doing that, I think you've seen this, but I'm going to hand out kind of the updated report and do things.
Sure. And if you have anything you want us to display for the public at home, we can do that.
Okay, great. I, I think the two renderings are important.
Okay. Do you want me to, do you want me to go over those quickly, Mariana?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So, so just, just quickly getting into that. And again, these are conceptual. Most people are familiar with what things look like today when you drive down to harbor. You know, it's kind of a bit of a bird's eye view of our rotary.
Can you get that, Bob?
We have 3A, the existing boathouse, the rotary in this area.
We don't, we don't see it at home yet, that's what
Oh, should I do it?
If you look at the TV monitor, we, there we go.
There you go.
There we go. See it? Okay, we got you. All right. Good.
That's what we have there today.
All right.
And to jump right to where we want to potentially go, I can show you a rendering done by our famous local architect, Al Kearney, who's done this pro bono for the town. He's also working in conjunction with Sean Pappich, who's doing all his work pro bono at this point, too.
Right.
But what it shows is really eliminating the rotary in the idea of putting, you know, an architecturally appropriate boathouse, something maybe that simulates some of the older structures that we used to have on the harbor, that would serve the purposes of the programming that needs to take place, to store the boats on the first floor, have a second-floor element that would be for the, would allow for a certain amount of fitness activity, but at the same time, public space for the public to use also for functions and things like that. It's kind of one of the new things that's happening in the boathouses in Boston, it works very well. But the other big piece that happens is by eliminating the rotary, it allows us to basically create a landscape corridor along 3A as well as along the water, and within that, incorporate the necessary parking that we need along this waterfront area. So we think as part of this process, we can have this evolve into both a nice entrance into Hingham from this direction, as well as serving the purposes that we need for, for infrastructure, for parking, as well as the pedestrian elements, including what I think would be ideal is, you know, laying out a bike path that would run along the harbor, so people could enjoy that also.
If I can interrupt, do you, have you any preliminary thoughts on the size of parking that we need additional?
Uh, well, hot off the presses.
Good. That's what we like, hot presses.
This is from Sean Pappich, late this afternoon. With the town, with the property that the town owns, and working with the state, if we eliminate the rotary to utilize that, we, in concept, we can, we can get about 115 parking spaces in that area, as well as the appropriate landscaping along the waterfront and the landscaping along the, along the roadway and so forth.
Can we put one of these up?
We got it.
Oh, good.
Actually, I can grab one of them.
Oh, he's got it right there.
No, it's already up.
So again, so again, this is, you know, this is still conceptual, but what it does show, but it is based on the accurate underlying base drawings and so forth, that we can enhance the parking significantly, and we view this as, this is joint-use parking. This is not parking that's exclusive for just the rowing and sailing, if people are going to go down there to look at the memorials, to go down there for picnicking. And at the same time, ultimately having the bridge to connect to the parking at the Bathing Beach, we see this all working in a meticulous manner.
So for the folks at home, conceptually, what you're thinking is putting parking where the mobile station used to be?
A portion of it, yeah. But at the same time, we also see, as an example, this little parking area today that's further down, almost directly across from the food center, that really doesn't work. We think eliminating that parking lot and replacing it with, with green space makes sense. So it's more of a planning effort through that corridor to make sure that we have the green space, it works well, in conservative, appropriate purpose. But again, also have the parking that's available for people, you know, people that live in South Hingham that want to go to the harbor, most of them are going to drive and need a place to park.
One of the long-term plans is, and I think we can see it on, if you move over just a little bit, Bob, on this one, is to move the current boathouse that is on Barnes One that Lincoln Maritime uses, clean up Barnes Two, or Steamboat, as some people call the wharf, and move that pavilion over there. Clean up the walking path so that people can get there, and do some work there to make that a green space with a nice shady pavilion for people to visit and just sit and look out at the harbor.
Okay.
So, and again, these are all our, our initial thoughts. We have not met with Planning Board, Conservation, we have not met with all the neighbors. So we, we see this as really kind of a start, and hopefully some advice and direction from you folks to, to be able to start moving this process forward and ultimately develop the plan.
Okay. Let me, I mean, we have a planning board, former planning board member here, so I'm not going to let all that talent sit idly by. So I would, you said two groups that I would say you got to go see, Conservation and Planning, without a doubt, that's for sure. But socializing this, that's the purpose of tonight, so.
Right.
Paul, do you have any?
This is what I call the pretty picture stage, but you're a pro, you know the drill. I appreciate the work that you've done. I look forward to hearing what the Planning Board has to say about this. I have my own thoughts, but at this point, I'd rather get the input from the public.
Yep.
But I would encourage you to get to the Planning Board quickly before you get too far down the road.
Yep. Okay.
And, and you, as I mentioned at the beginning, I see one of my Summer Street folks in the back of the room. It's important that we work together to get that traffic issue resolved. That has to be, that is first.
Yep.
In my mind, because this, none of this can happen without that being resolved.
We see that as a very important element. I know there's separate meetings going on that we've attended with that. And we also see you've been working with Harbor Development and working with the neighbors at Crow Point to create that appropriate connection, too.
Right.
A couple of people have commented, wouldn't it be great to be able to, you know, have a nice pleasant walk from that direction, and possibly even a bike path? With all the kids that we have in the different neighborhoods, to make that accessible, both walking as well as bikes, we think it'd be a great direction to go.
Good, good thinking.
One of the, one of the other areas that we haven't really touched on, this will be a two-story building, and on the second story, you'll have classroom space or meeting space. And we see the classroom space as a community resource, both for our schools, public and private, and for community groups to bring every age group and teach them maritime things, teach them about the harbor, teach them about the harbor islands, and teach them skills to use on the water, whether it's boating, sailing, rowing, or any number of activities. And who knows what the, the next thing's going to be that will replace paddle boarding.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public? Any comments? Christine, would you come up to the microphone, please?
If y'all haven't heard from me in
I haven't heard from you in a week.
Christine, you tricked 104 Summer Street. My son, you know, we're right down the street from this area, and as many of you know, we've been working really hard. We have a neighborhood group now that's been trying to really just get as much squeaking so we can get as much oil from the state to try to, and as well the town, to try to get this a safer area. My son, every day is, I walk him down to, he's just turned 10, he can't walk down from Summer Street down to this area. I would love to be able to see, you know, some of these initial drawings and things, but just to have everybody be involved, keep in mind, of course, my initial thought is how many cars, you know, there's 70 kids there now in high school, and it just, as I drove here today, there was a pile of glass right in front of the rotary, right outside the driveway. And we love the Sailing Center, we love this town, but we just have to get this safer. But I think that working in conjunction with all of these developments and all of these areas is just, it's excellent.
Well said. That's, I think, Paul's whole point. Those issues need to get flushed out early on, so we know what, what we're dealing with.
But yet, it's another group that adds, you know,
Right.
more voices, all working together, and
And Christine, if you remember at the Summer Street meeting, we asked the DOT to extend the study to at least up to the Lobster Pound.
Yes, exactly.
Because of the walkway and the ability for people to use the harbor without ending up as a hood ornament on Route 3A.
Yeah.
So we totally agree with you.
And now, there's another issue there. Yeah, there's no question. And the real issue, you can't solve the Lobster Pound issue without going to the Crow Point intersection.
And it's all related, and that's
It is, absolutely.
And it's all related. That's why, that has to be solved first.
Yeah. It's, for us, it's just very exciting, because it's a whole nother group, and it's all just trying to raise the bar and get it safer, and so everybody can enjoy it, so I don't have to, you know, take my life in my own hands, walking to the Sailing Center.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to follow up.
Follow up.
Briefly. Thank you very much for doing this. I know that the conceptual sometimes goes through a changing process, and I just urge all of you who are interested in this project to, to remember that. But we have a lot of talent in town here, both as the presenting side and the reviewing side. Some of these ideas will require zoning changes, so obviously, you're going to need strong support of the general population at town meeting. But you know, the harbor generates a lot of interest. It has for years, and it will continue to do so. And I thank you for pointing out that there are people here in this town that are, they may not be boaters, but they're, they're passionate in their view for the harbor and their ability to enjoy it from the land side. And I think that that's important, to be recognized in this process.
That's, and I want to personally thank you. What you all may not know is, I think, DJ, you drove me to Boston two or three times.
Well, the others.
Yeah. And that's, you, you got, you made a convert, and it's important for people going through Boston, you see what things can be done and how they made it blend in so nicely with the environment and the terrain, so. But more importantly, it's your leadership that got this to, to where it's at, and I, and I thank you for that, so publicly.
I'm just happy to work with a great group of folks. We've got a tremendous, tremendous number of people that are, as Paul said, interested in the harbor. And, you know, I, I look at places like, like Boston, when I'm in at CRI, and you look at the amount of activity there that occurs on the Charles River between harbor, sailboats, paddleboards, kayaks, just about everything. And you look at the number of different jurisdictions, because you've got Boston, Cambridge, Newton. Newton, you've got all these activities, and they make it all work. Here, it's just Hingham, so. It should be easy. Everybody working together.
Piece of cake. Would you make sure that there are people from the press here that they have copies of these?
Sure.
That they would, they would very much appreciate in helping us getting the word out, so.
So our next, our next step is the Planning Board, as well as obviously meeting with the neighborhood groups.
I think Paul made a good point about the ZBA, too, to find out what zoning changes, those don't just happen.
Well, Mary Denham Savage has a meeting with all of the department heads, and we can certainly make sure that we get a slot somewhere there.
Actually, I think that'd be great.
Yep.
Then you get all, good point.
And then we'll go and meet with the school committee and share this with the schools. I've already touched base with them.
Good.
And give them the presentation. So I really want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I'm really looking forward to working with the group to see this, because it's not a, it's not going to happen in six months. But if we don't start, it won't happen at all. So it's a multi-year project, and I'm really looking forward to this.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, DJ. Thank you very much.
There's only one element on these. We did the plan in your binder, and I'll say it slightly, it doesn't show up on here, and that is, we added the appropriate flag in front of the...
Oh.
Good man.
Oh, yeah, there it is. You learned. Okay.
I haven't even seen this one.
No, that's a good one.
I like this. DJ, thank you. I hadn't even seen this one.
Okay.
Literally.
A lot of help from everyone. We can leave those as the...
I'm going to let, the public is going to leave.
Okay, grab it.
There's some, these are kind of, I don't believe I saw anything else today.
I didn't know.
What am I missing? Probably everything.
Could I ask you to please vacate the room so we can continue with the meeting? Thank you. We've got some votes. Irma, could you do the deed one?
Oh, the deed?
Yeah.
Hey, I make a motion to pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, to approve the acceptance of the deed of Richard C. Pierce, trustee of Sanctuary Cove Realty Trust to the Town of Hingham, acting by and through the Hingham Conservation Commission for the gift of a parcel of land known as and numbered 60 George Washington Boulevard in Hingham, more particularly shown on Land Court Plan 3586-3A.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next vote has to do with a Article 11 from town meeting, the Noonan Property. Mr. Haley?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen execute that certain purchase and sale agreement dated as of July 15, 2013, between N.C.A. Noonan and the Town of Hingham for the acquisition authorized under Article 11 by the 2013 Town Meeting of certain land on Rockland Street, which includes the fee title in parcel A, and a conservation restriction over parcel B, as more particularly described in said agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Alexiades, the, I saw on our package, a letter approved by council concerning the visit of, of the discussion we had, rather, with Back River Homes?
Correct. And you can see your next vote on your list is approving. Mr. Hastings has signed a letter on behalf of Back River Homes to agree with the terms that you presented at the last meeting. The second unit that is not built, or the last unit that's not built, will be built with 1,300 square feet at a minimum, two bedrooms, and one and a half baths. And the remaining units will be left as is.
Okay. Irma, could you?
Okay. I move to sign a letter of agreement with Thomas J. Hastings stating that the town approves the marketing of an affordable unit at 6 Back River Road as-built with 1,300 square feet and with one bath, and a second affordable unit at 12 Back River Road to be constructed and marketed as follows: a minimum of 1,300 square feet with two bedrooms and one and a half baths.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two special liquor licenses. Any issue on these, Betty?
No, they both came in fine.
Okay. Mr. Haley, would you do the question?
Sure. I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt liquors, beverages, liquor license to the J. Tolman for the Tolman MDA Telethon Congregation Shereesh Shalom on Sunday, September 1, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on Monday, September 2, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Irma, if you would do.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Jonathan Dunn for the South Shore Chamber of Commerce Summer Outing to be held at the launch at Hingham Shipyard on Friday, July 19, 2013, from 3:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have one last vote, a resolution to a discussion concerning an appointment to the Harbor Development Committee. Mr. Haley, would you make the motion?
Sure. I'll move to appoint William Redden to the Harbor Development Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 8:30. Okay.
Good work.
Okay.
Are we going there or are they coming here?
No, we're going there. We're going to go there. So I think our meeting will continue in the, in the Advisory Committee Room next door. Okay. Thank you, and that will not be televised, but our next meeting for the Board of Selectmen is August the 1st. Thank you. Stay cool, everybody. And by the way, before I forget, before I say good night, I want to thank one particular young man by the name of Henry Buchanan, who came out of the woods playing baseball to help me in the All-Star Game, the old-timers game, on July the 6th. And I have his notes. Boy, he's going to be some broadcaster, I can tell you.